That's your proposal?
Yes, sir, please.
My second motion. A move and seconded to allow non-residents to speak. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Hands down, as opposed. We didn't get two-thirds of those who are here, but uh...
Two-thirds agree.
Everybody's gonna have to have an opinion about this, otherwise it's not gonna pass. Two-thirds are required, okay? All those in favor of allowing non-residents to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, hands down, those opposed. Okay, so we're not getting two-thirds, but let's go ahead.
I think he doesn't know the non-residents' vote.
Well, two-thirds of those present, so go ahead, speak, yes, sir.
The town government has a current report on office of the president. I believe they did today. I would like to hear his comment.
If the code officer is here and says I would like to speak, pretend to speak, then it's up to him. I'm not sure who the code officer is.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
Do you wanna weigh in on this?
No, I don't.
Don't wanna speak, okay? Are there other questions or comments about referendum item two? Which is the Uniform Building Code Ordinance? What else want to talk about, yes, ma'am?
If I want to hear Mr. Heath or from Mr. Nettow on what they specifically... Uh, based upon this ordinance, uh, as we're doing two, it's not allowed any choice. Not through Mr. Thompson, because I'm sure that Mr. Thompson works sixty hours, he knows this inside and out. Uh, it's the other two that work twenty and fifteen hours, I'd like to hear their comment.
I agree with it, and I vote for it.
I'm sorry?
I agree with it, and I vote for it.
Ready and you voting for it? Okay.
They can choose to comment or cannot choose to comment. So we've got one comment. Are there other questions or comments on referendum item number two?
Uh, we didn't hear anything.
Well, we chose not to say anything.
Oh, we say no comments?
What I'm telling you is that all these questions may not be answered, okay?
It's a huge surprise.
It's a choice not to answer the question, okay? Yes, sir.
Christopher Patrick. So, I have a question about the whole one and two family as opposed to the commercials. Same with developer, I have subdivision going in. I mean, the one and two family, say duplex, single-family house. Um, I'm obviously under financial, you know, uh, a timeline, where I have to get this done, okay? Now, if there are any financial ramifications as to if the CEO does not return calls, does not meet inspection dates, will the town be held liable where they have shut out the ability for that developer or builder to hire a third party to become compliant with the cap?
Good question. Anybody? You want me to answer the question? No answer. Other questions or comments on item number two? Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Brett Violet, uh, listen. I, looking down at this sample ballot, um, I thought I said in the past, most of the time when anything was brought before us for referendum, that the budget committee had reviewed these things. Um, I'm wondering why every single one of these up to, uh, number six hasn't been looked at by anybody, or treated exceptionally whatsoever.
So the question is relative to mine, yes?
To each chapter, because the budget committee had all the long time, money issues. We don't know about them.
Yeah. You have any other question?
I know that to a degree, but that has been sort of a narrow view within the past on a lot of things. About everything that ever came before us on referendum, I haven't looked at it. Someone besides three guys that say I'm ready to sit and vote for it.
I don't know who's voting.
Actually, that's not the question. The main question was, why didn't somebody else make a change of this?
Other questions or comments on item two? Okay.
Oops, I'm sorry. I've been asked how, I'm the chairman of the, um... Yeah, right. I did put it blank. Um, I just do wanna, why I wanted to realize that I was not even consulted, or did I know until I read online that they were doing an ordinance for my committee? So, if that tells you anything, we're all on, seems like the same thing as people. It was done behind closed doors. I wasn't gonna say anything, but they really did something on my resume, on my committee, online.
Other comments or questions, yes, ma'am?
Melanie Fulter, this is kind of a general statement. Uh, I've heard several references to the website being going online. Are there any provisions for residents who do not know online? Who do not access the website? Who do not have a computer? Who have absolutely no idea what is gonna be on the May tenth ballot that used to be in June? Are there notifications in the paper? Is all this information in the newspaper for people who do still do things the old-fashioned way of reading the newspaper? Or getting something in the mail? Explain to them what is going on in their town?
Question, anybody answer the question about dissemination of information?
No. I can answer it.
Go ahead.
I can answer that, but I don't know anything.
Look at, look at me.
But, I'm sorry, what are we talking about?
I know, don't get that.
I'm sorry, I'm talking to my boss.
You're talking to the whole room.
I'm talking to you from beyond.
Yeah.
I go to all the elected meetings, I missed eight in the county. I've asked repeatedly for some kind of postcard to let people know about town meeting today. I've asked repeatedly for postcards, and people know that the vote has been changed. I've asked repeatedly for buyers to be made at places within town like, uh, trains and airport station, or your hometown mobile, or, you know, some kind of general place where people can know our best about it.
Okay.
Some kind of general place.
You're not on point, so finish your question.
I am on point, I'm answering your question. And the answer is absolutely not. That it was talked about, it's too much money for postage, it's too much money for printing. But, what happens is, I have my online website, or Mr. Thorpe has his. And if it's where it's on the town website, mine and Mr. Thorpe. And if you're not online, you're out.
Other comments or questions on item number two? Now, we're gonna stick to the item which is the Uniform Building Code, so do you have a question?
I was fine with this young lady's question here. One of the items that I asked for at the town office yesterday was I wanted specific date and authorization of changing of our voting date. And what I was given was a selectmen's meeting minutes, I guess, quarters, maybe minutes, from the August thirty-first, twenty fifteen, the selectmen's meeting.
This is not about...
Allow the voting date to change.
This is not about, you're off, off point now. This is gonna...
Chair Thompson moved to change the date, the other two agreed, and so the date was changed on August thirty-fifth.
Thank you.
August thirty-first of twenty fifteen, that's when the dating date was changed.
Any questions or comments, yes, sir.
I just got a comment. These ordinance were made by the selectmen, apparently, maybe, who knows? But, they voted three to nothing. If the selectmen are doing these ordinance, should they abstain from voting on their own ordinance? Because if people are here at this meeting today, they don't even, they don't go by what the selectmen recommend. Yet the selectmen can't stand up and say why they did this, and why they voted for this this way. So why should their vote be on the ballot? Because they're the ones that actually did these ordinances, apparently.
They're...
So they should be abstaining from voting, just like we have to abstain when we vote on stuff.
Other comments or questions on item number two? See, yes, sir.
That's, that has to be, this is an illegal election. We've always been able to vote and move the election to June. And that's what should be out. We didn't hold the elections, the trainees were at, at May tenth. So basically, this is an illegal election.
Okay. Okay, 'cause not before, so that's a particular item before that. There's an issue to bring up, whatever point you get a chance to do, so, not now. Other questions or items on number two? See, now, that's over three. The ordinance entitled, not eleven in Planning Works, status of orders being enacted. I can recommend, yes, three. There are questions or comments on item number three? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ben Wilson, and I would like to know who wrote, uh, this ordinance. We have, I mean, these are called, one, one, you write a meeting, you have to kind of, at Clark, whatnot, to let people know where you got your information and who wrote it. If this has an option, I would like to know who wrote, uh, this ordinance? Where the information came from, and not just, well, they went online and pulled stuff from different towns. I wanna know where specifically this ordinance came from, maybe the planning board, or any other person in this town who's open for public discussion, uh, in place every other town.
Question about the origin on item number three? Anybody answer the question?
Item, again, is, I'm enjoying it, if you're rather part of the town, I've already established that, you know, on every ordinance, for this, there's a discussion to be had, and that's not up to other people. That is continuously redundant.
We said we have to be on a time for that.
Intuitively redundant.
Can I just say, exchange it? Very brief, very brief.
I just want everybody to know that my questions on this are not aimed at Ben Thompson, okay? I think that Thompson does a good job. My reason behind this is because Ben Thompson is the only one doing this. There's nobody else giving him any input. We have two other members.
Alright, now I'm not even...
I'm just saying, I don't want people to think I'm attacking this Ben Thompson. That's not my only...
We're, you know, this is, we're just wasting...
I just want people to know...
We're wasting each other's time by giving in personalities. It's not gonna help you make a decision on May tenth about how to vote for these things. We are, item number three, you have forty-two to go. Forty-two to vote. Okay? Okay. Thank you. You're the one who's gonna be doing this, somebody. Yes, sir.
Quick question, was the planning board involved for this? Uh, are they in favor of this?
Okay, question about whether the planning board participates in this. Anybody answer the question?
No.
Not directly is the answer. Other questions or comments on item three? Yes, ma'am.
Um, does the planning board that currently sits, are they covered under the town insurance? Cause my understanding is the last board trying to anticipate because they were told they weren't covered under town insurance.
Town insurance has nothing to do with this referendum. So you're out on point. All you're doing is prolonging the discussion about items that are not relevant. If you don't like the ordinance on May tenth, vote against it. Are there other questions or comments on item three? Thank you, item four. Shall the ordinance entitled, not eleven, Budget Committee Establishment Orders Being Acted? Other questions or comments on item referendum item four? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I just had a chat with a bunch of people. We are, you guys are given like fifteen papers from, fifteen pounds. Uh, I know Corinna had quite, a bit of input was ignored. I know Mr. Wright, uh, he had quite a bit of input. I mean, the little things that they said, the little order, which, this is an adjective, do not happen. The little things that they said, like the order change, and the new garden, and quite a few, the order changes, those things were heated, and those were changed. Uh, but, the budget committee at the pool was trying to establish their rule. And basically, what they were told is, this is last minute, we gotta get this done, we gotta get it on the ballot. Here's fifteen different things, pick and choose, and let's cut and pick. This is not a comprehensive budget committee said why it was created by a budget committee. And that's my statement, I say, no.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, yes?
Um, can you do work on members of the budget committees? Um, I don't know if this just is a misprint or not, but right in this, uh, Article Three of Membership Section, it says nine committee members. We have always been eleven, and that's what, on the document that we, uh, submitted to them, it said eleven, so somehow, people have gotten taken out of the way.
Other questions or comments on item referendum item four? See, now, thank you, referendum item five, shall the, shall the ordinance entitled, not eleven, Recall Orders Being Acted? Are there questions or comments, yes, ma'am?
I'm curious to know what is in place presently for recall? What system is in place presently to recall?
Three, recall or...
There's nothing in place now. There's no way to recall an elected official.
There are various, uh, there's the provision state law that's under various specific circumstances. It's just a, uh, very long.
Tell them who made them apply. Okay.
Other questions or comments, yes, ma'am? Item five.
Uh, I know who wrote this one. I think she did a really good job. And, uh, what I would like to know about in this backhoe, if you had help from one of his electmen, uh, writing, um, this recall ordinance, or two or three of his electmen, or if you were completely driven to write above, did you have any legal help with that? But, you know, who wrote this? Sorry.
I wrote the majority of it. From pleasantries in Berwick's. So, I went to Berwick's, I pulled in there, and adjusted it to eleven. And then, um, there were other people in the credits, and quite, um, things like that. So, there was something from, from that.
So, basically, it was...
Probably seventy-five to eighty percent of it, yeah, from Berwick's.
Other comments or questions on item referendum item five?
Sure. I'm sorry. Um, I do know one other thing about the state law as opposed to local law. State law is that if they commit a crime within their position, as they are acting as, say, selectmen, or road commissioner, or something, and they're actually acting within that, and they're, and they commit a crime, that falls into the state. They were on the bank, and they're going to jail, we have no way of getting them out of the position. So, with this ordinance, that would allow us as a town to open that position instead of having another person within that position, and not someone to be able to...
Other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Sorry, do you have just have one more question? Does this, uh, recall ordinance allow for even the majority of the town COs to have the person that they elected is not entered personally, is not holding up his job? Does this recall ordinance allow for the common special election within the town eleven to remove if this electman was not acting officially in the position?
Um, there's cause, you have to have cause, and then you need, and then you need to initiate a petition. And then it has to be there, like, if the town's already calling, they call any ordinance? Or we have to go with...
Is no questions on item five, recall ordinance? Yes, ma'am?
So, my question is for the town attorney. From a legal standpoint, what you're saying is presently, if the voters run happy with an elected official, and we wanted to oust them from their seat, the only recourse we would have to do that would be to look at the state laws, and the state ordinance says the only way we can get them out of that elected position is if they have committed a crime. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Or you wait until the next election.
And wait until the next election.
Or...
Or you wait for...
Or wait till the next election. So my question is, technically speaking, should an elected official have an in-house, so it's being investigated done, whatever that is, whether it's attorneys, or investigators, or our selectmen? And the in-house investigation has overwhelming evidence that this person has committed illegal acts, both in, as his position that he seats in, and as a private citizen? And they compile all this stuff, and they take it down to our local district attorney's office, or our local state police, and our local state police say, uh, well, we're too busy, we can't file, or, oh, we don't think that's important? Or a district attorney asks not to prosecute? Then we actually have to wait until state police and the district attorney's office brings charges forth, finds the person guilty of the criminal act? Because obviously, you can't be found guilty until, right, you're proven guilty. So, there really isn't any recourse, we have to stay well at this point. So this recall ordinance is in fact one of the most important things on referendum, yes?
Anybody answer the question, yes or no? Yeah. Thank you. Other questions or comments on item five? Yes, ma'am?
Um, I just have a comment on this, sir. Do you mind looking up the, um, Berwick Home Rule? Where, um, it's pretty much up to our selectmen to decide if something they see or miss is worthy of going to the district attorney?
Other comments or questions, yes, ma'am?
I don't know, question about the town having COVID ethics policy? That work?
Question, question is, if it now, that COVID ethics?
Policy. That would work?
Would that be helpful?
You know I'll answer that.
Right.
It's in front of a report that I've had, and been brought up since two thousand thirteen. Uh, would that work? No, but it would give you something to, at least motivate to a standard to, uh, and go ahead and hand you the recall ordinance. You know, to show, as, as the public, you know, as the people of the town, that, well, I'm happy with it because of this. You know, that's...
So you almost have that policy?
Yeah.
And so if somebody did do something wrong, they have to be having responsibility. Correct?
No.
Other comments or questions, yes, sir?
Do we have a recall every year? Ben Thompson, with Mr. Heath next year, and Mr. Nettow, with, uh, we don't have any policies, and we don't have any options, and we're not on there.
A lot of families are busy here.
Other comments or questions, yes, ma'am?
That doesn't help us if we have a selectman that's fitting and doing that for our town, and up for elections in three years.
Other questions on item five? Yes, sir.
So if we don't have a vote about this policy in place, then what are the, what are we using as baseline or benchmark as to what we can revoke their elected status? If there's no policies in place as to how we hold them accountable, then how are we gonna go and hope and not incur a lawsuit or maybe a wrongful termination of their elected position?
Anybody answer the question? Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to answer you with my bad turn to you. Uh, the, the truth of the matter is, Mr. Thompson, uh, presented that ethics committee shortly after my term to our meeting, which was February of two thousand and fifteen. He presented, uh, at the time, to Mr. Heath and Mr. Philbrook, uh, and they were just so busy, and kind of got shot around. I don't think at that time, it was from, shortly after Mr. Nettow was elected in June, half, two thousand and fifteen, I personally requested Mr. Thompson to put it back on the table, which she gladly did. But, Mr. Thompson has tried to work on this consistently since June, two thousand and fifteen. Uh, Mr., Mr. Heath refuses, loud. Mr. Nettow has tried to work on it a little bit. From what I understand, and I've been asked, and I've been on a long road trip, uh, Ms. Lane has been at the selectmen's meetings and talking, and they've done quite a bit of work on the ethics policy. However, just like every other ordinance and policy here, it is not slated to go in front of people for input. Um, they don't really give us a lot of input, even when we show up at state before and talk about it with the selectmen's meeting. It's all, it's all, that's your town, that's your decision. And, and, yeah, true, right, you gotta just think of thinking this time.
Other comments or questions on item five? Yes, ma'am?
Anyway, um, Mr. Heath has had his policy quite a while, for a year and a half, and he still hasn't created over yet.
Other comments or questions on item five? Yes, sir.
So, once again, I'll be putting the cart before the horse with this referendum. We have no ability to have a benchmark to, uh, to elect these votes. I mean, what are we gonna use? We're gonna say that he didn't read it for a year and a half, or, or this one, you know, he's, he's apocetized to his position, and he was that brown, so we don't have it? Or do we have to wait until something major happens? I mean, if there's something, we can answer that.
Is no comments or questions on item five? Yes, ma'am?
I mean, um, the recall ordinance, because I have briefly, what is required is a petition or a written petition for recall, signed by a number of registered voters of the town eleven. The number of voters required to get a recall, if this were to be voted on by the people, is only ten percent of the people who actually voted at the previous election. So, if only one hundred people actually cast votes at the previous election, then you would need at least ten people to sign the petition, and they would have to get ten to see what they have to petition. They would have to get their, one person starting the petition, would have to get their reason why they want that person recalled, and it's very specific, and much addressed, and meaningful for every time in the past. Very simple, cut and dry, and it gives the people of this town the chance to recall someone who they changed their mind about having that elected petition. I think this is a great thing, and I hope everybody votes to that point in place.
Other comments or questions on item five? Yes, ma'am?
That's actually ten percent of a lot of the electoral election, which is two hundred and seventy. Okay, I was, sorry, I was for a high percentage of numbers.
Other comments or questions on item five?
I might ask, that, there's no, no why, any specific reason why you would ask for a recall, other than the fact it is on a petition. When you, when you circulate a petition, that, you think you wanna have, uh, the source information is concerned, it's on that petition? That's nothing to do with whether or not recall election's gonna be considered. So, that's, that's the reason for it. If you have a circulated petition, and somebody's been signing it, they're gonna look at it, they're either gonna disagree with your, your statement, or agree with it, one or the other. But once, once we have a sufficient amount of signatures, within ten days, the selectmen have to act on that and ask for recall. And again, if this, we have, if we have ten percent of the amount of, uh, people that voted for the life of the electoral, electoral election, they will automatically take petition and come in and ask for it.
Which, right, it's still home rule.
Other comments or questions on item five? Alright, thank you, item six. This is the authorization to elect two additional elect... Positions, the two thousand and fifteen town meeting ballot. In two thousand and seventeen, so it's not, you're not gonna be electing as this fast, it's not gonna be like two more, A, B, R, okay? Uh, other comments or questions on item six? Yes, ma'am?
Hey, so I can tell you, uh, who wrote this one. I wrote it along with, uh, the help of selectmen Thompson, who is going down the floor, it's gonna turn to board, the guy did, and sometimes I remember about the idea, but, uh, he basically considered what I was thinking, and what I had spoken to my team about, and he put it there in writing. But he would, uh, basically, pretty much read on. I went and spoke to Corinna about it. Corinna thought it was a great idea, and she helped, uh, gather signatures, she and I got a lot of signatures for this. Uh, so that's wrote. Uh, I had a lot of questions, uh, come to me on this, or if I could just have a minute to add to it for this, well. A lot of people have asked me why I want five people? And the reason why I want five people, they get, the term has grown so much in the past year, year, year. We've gone from two thousand people to seven thousand people. And when it was two thousand people, everybody was like Buddy, they were all from here, they all grew up here, they're all related to each other, they work together. And that's not so anymore. I think if we're on for fifteen years, and I'm still considered from a lady, and, uh, I don't have a voice a lot of times, unless I'm sitting in this selectmen's meeting, running my mouth, I'm flying, running my mouth, that's the only voice I get. I'm not considered at all by two of our selectmen who have any merit in this town. No voice, none. So, this, uh, five-member board was originally spoken about, uh, with regards to that. Uh, one of the other questions that I've been receiving quite a bit is, whoa, boy, five guys, who's gonna pay for it? And I can tell you, our selectmen are supposed to be part-time positions, and I consider a part-time position to be twenty hours a week or less. And maybe I should have held my early department for this time. We have selectmen Thompson who work sixty, seventy...
But instead of getting into the...
No, no, I'm here, I'm telling you why this is...
I want you to talk about...
Oh, I can tell you. Does anybody not wanna hear this? Could I tell them?
Right, I don't wanna hear, your rendition, your rendition, your rendition of each selectman's...
I'm not gonna give you my rendition.
Okay, tell us mine, this is a good proposal, or not.
Thank you, thank you. Selectmen Thompson work sixty to seventy hours a week in this town. He's responsible for accessing, he's responsible for budgets, he's responsible for him, everybody's... We have two other selectmen. If we had sixty hours, twenty hours, fifteen hours, definitely... If we had sixty hours, twenty hours, and fifteen hours, that comes up, let's just say, ninety hours. By rights, we should have one man working thirty hours, one man working thirty hours, one man working thirty hours. But we don't have that. We have one man that's retired working fifteen hours, one that works part-time working twenty hours, and a man who owns his own business, who is certified by the state in so many different parts of the country. And he's working sixty, and I mean, how is his business, how is his family? I don't understand the logistics of dumping this whole town like that. So my idea is, if we have ninety hours, let's just make it a hundred hours. Let's give five people twenty hours a week, twelve bucks an hour, and it's going to all work out the same. And we don't have somebody on overload writing every single ordinance, every single law, every single minute meeting in this town. We have one man, usually that's one. You know what happened the last time that happened? Jason Cole happened the last time. Not that many is that way. But that's what happened, the last time.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions on item six?
Yes, sir. One thing I noticed, and I'm on one side of this for sure, so I'm not familiar with anything else. But in this town, and I've seen it begins, I've worked for the town, I've been, you know, an officer of the town, and every time, like, um, he just, he just mentioned that we have a recall review on the selectmen. One problem with only having three on the board is we put in the rest of them, and they're all a lot of the other two. That's going on, well, two in line, and they, they just, uh, gang up on the new one. We want change, but we never have that. This town hasn't changed in fifty years, literally. It's been the same, over and over again, we ask to change, it doesn't happen. Uh, we bring in a new person, they've been effective, they're ineffective. I just see faces right up there, they have pride, they have no way, no way. You better do something, the rest of them couldn't. And, it, it, that's why five would be a lot better. We have more of a cross-section, uh, we have people from localities in the town, it'd be more approachable, and I think adding to the board regardless of budgetary constraints, who cares? It's opinionless anyway. Uh, get, get more people on the board, get a bigger cross-section, so that there are a lot of officials more people on.
Other comments or questions on item six? Thor?
Harrison, Thor, uh, I just want to throw something out there as far as five versus three. I mean, five versus three, that's not necessarily going to change the dynamic of the kinds of people, whoever, whatever their interests are, are letting it forward. We have a cross-section that maybe isn't working as close as it could right now, but if you have five, this means it's going to change the dynamic of how it's, big cross-section and diversity. That is not a mandatory kind of thing. Secondly, the hours that they work, it's not as much hours that they want to work. There's nothing that governs how Ben Thompson worked fifteen hours a week. It wouldn't matter, uh, if he could work fifty, it doesn't matter. They work, there's nothing governing how many hours they work. And we see it in the past, abuse of some selectmen on putting hours down for et cetera, for doing stuff on the phone, and there's not a really good deal of rating in of them when they do that. Um, maybe if you had five people on the select board, you surprise them, you sort of a transfer petition, you could go back. Because then it would not be a fair one. You know, you don't know the dynamic, I think it's a good hearing, and I think if the town manager, if you had elected the right person to be selected last time, you would probably have the best representative right now that would be voting for a town manager, and you'd probably get it in. So I think it's a bad hearing if you, the town manager, just pulling three or five, it's not going to solve anything.
Other comments or questions on item six? Let's go ahead, yes, sir.
My name is Jim Durk. I strongly advocate to, uh, vote yes on this amendment, or this ordinance. I have been in several selectmen's meetings in the past year. Quite frankly, it's embarrassing. We have one person that acts like a selectman, does a lot. I encourage anyone that is in the midst of a selectmen's meeting, you know, go, go online and see what happens at this meeting, it really and truly is embarrassing. If we added two more, I would highly recommend that the Town Eleven go with the majority of towns, probably all the towns in Maine, get rid of a holiday wage for selectmen. Go back to the stipend. We would get a different caliber of people writing for the selectmen, they can do as a part-time job. Some of these selectmen, must say the ones that occur, some of these selectmen took a left and went to the town hall to pick up an application, instead of going to Sanford to get an application to McDonald's. And I strongly believe that. Motive by selectmen, do away, do away with the holiday wage, bring back the stipend.
Other comments or questions?
Uh, I would just like to make a comment on that.
See now.
Uh, you can't hear me now, there's a virus. Um, I just wanted to make a comment on that, I would be worried that someone would be there for the stipend, and you're not, it's not going to say you have to work a certain number of hours, so. You could take the stipend and not work.
I'm sure that's happening right now, they're getting twelve hours, twelve hours an hour.
Well, they come to be there working.
Other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um, just to go back to, you had mentioned about the town manager, they can also work for the board of five selections.
Additional comments or the fellow people have to talk? Yes, ma'am, about this item?
Yes, sir. My question is actually to the budget committee. Uh, my understanding is, it sounds like one of the selectmen's being a little overloaded with time constraints and having to put in more time than it should. So, I, I've already here, heard it, but I want to clarify, with the budget committee, approximately, it would approximately cost to act here the same amount of money to have five selectmen, which would cover our body a little better than it does to currently have the three, because the hours needed to fulfill the jobs would be stretched out among five, not three. So, the question specifically is, would it be about the same amount of money spent between five selectmen and three selectmen before the tax years?
Did anyone answer the, not the budget committee, but choose to answer the question?
I, well, I believe, and this is only my personal belief, not the whole budget committee, that it would probably be about what we're paying the selectmen now.
Right, because whatever, because the answer is, so many hours, whether it's split up among one selectman, three selectmen, or five selectmen, and it's still about the same depending on prices, it's obvious.
Right, and I absolutely believe that we have better coverage. We're up to almost seven thousand citizens now in the summer, and even more than that, go to the twelve, and, um, I, I believe that people have better coverage.
Well, now, generally, with the three selectmen, if one of them would be upset, and we only have two, can they continue to vote our names, or do they have to wait for that third one to come?
Nope, the two is the core, and.
Two is the core. So what happens when one votes yes and one votes no? So five definitely be much more advantageous, I mean, as a manager for a workplace, I'd rather have five people covering my name than three people covering my name. Absolutely, okay. Thank you for that.
Additional comments or questions? Let's go ahead, gentlemen.